Pledge of Allegiance towards whatever flag is closest for everyone. Good evening, I'm calling this meeting of the Barrington Town Council to order at 7:03 PM. All members of the Town Council are present. I first ask that you rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll ask Jim Cunha to take us through the announcements, please, Jim.
Thank you, President Carroll. As a reminder, the COVID testing site is still open. At Barrington Plaza, it's open Tuesday through Saturday from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It will remain open indefinitely. Also, there are vaccinations available at the walk-up clinic Wednesday and Friday at the Old Shores in East Providence across from East Providence High School. We're also conducting a vaccine clinic at the high school this week for students between the ages of 16 and 19, and any of their family members that would care to get vaccinated as well. We're getting into the final strokes of the budget season. Tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, the municipal and school budgets will be reviewed by the COA. The final vote will be taken a week from tomorrow on May 11th. Budget hearing will be on Wednesday, June 2nd at 7:00 PM. And then the financial town meeting will be held in person at Barrington High School, depending on tonight's decision from the council, on June 16th at 7:00 PM. Last month, public works planted, excuse me, over the last 12 months, public works has planted 109 trees and 77 trees have been removed. And that number should go up significantly with some of the efforts made over the last couple of weeks. And finally, boards and commissions, there's an opening on resilience and energy commission, one vacancy for the first alternate. That's all I have, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Jim. Before we get into our next set of items, which is the consent agenda, I wanted to give an opportunity to members of the council to highlight anything that is in the consent agenda, that they wanted to draw attention to, rather than pulling that item. Of course, you're still able to pull it if you want. But does any member of the council want to highlight anything that's on the consent agenda? Jacob, please.
I have just got a question, it's not a highlight, it's a question for Chief DeGrazenza. And I was wondering about the time it takes for the firearm permit investigations. You noted in the report that it's taking significantly longer, and I know it's because of the state law change. And I see that there are about 600 of them expected for the year, and that it's taking substantial time. I wondered, is that all detective time, and how much time is it?
Yes, it is. As you know, I think you inquired about that law passage last year during the COVID, in the summer. So we didn't know what effect it would have on us, like all the other departments. So initially, it would be only the police department in the town where the gunshot ordeal resided. Now, we, you know, we had no idea how many Barrington residents were out purchasing weapons. And every time they purchased one, unfortunately, they're purchasing multiple weapons on multiple dates. And each time we get a check, it's taken us at least an hour. And we're estimating, based on our numbers since the passage of the statute in August, we're looking at about 600 per year. That's something we never had to do before. So now, at an hour at minimum. It's hard to explain, so it's difficult. There's a lot of gray areas, so in our position, it's very hard. You might have someone who's never been arrested, but there's so many different incidents they may have had on their, you know, on their check that we do. So we have to look into those further, even though it's not an arrest. And, you know, we're very conscious of every little thing, because here we are approving them to purchase, you know, a weapon in light of everything happening around the country over the last several years. Obviously, that opens up us to potential lawsuits too in the future. I can see that coming, because we have denied some. Some people who were not arrested but had some questionable incidents on their record. So to answer your question, 600, is that at least $600, I would say at a minimum, that has been added to our detective division. It is the detective unit that's handling that. There's a lot to that law, so we're actually still learning that law as we do those checks.
It seems like a good safety provision in the law, but that's more than a quarter time of a full-time person for the year. Might be something we want to discuss to lobby the state for some funding to cover that at a future meeting.
Correct. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'd just like to draw attention to the work of the Barrington Police Department and the Bay Team in successfully taking back drugs, that is, prescription medications. I saw an email from Chief and his detective Josh Burrell. We turned in 385 and a half pounds of drugs to the DEA for the take-back. That's, congratulations, those are medications that either would be floating around and dangerous to, especially to folks in the homes where they are, or affecting the environment too. So, thank you, Chief. Next set of items on the agenda is what we call the consent agenda. These are usually non-controversial items, and there won't be a separate discussion on them unless a council member or citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be reconsidered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does anyone from the council have anything they want to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none? Anyone who is attending, looking for hands, if anyone wants to take something off the agenda? Okay, seeing none, do I hear a motion to?
There is one.
Hiba Aswad, please, please. If you could unmute her, thanks.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Please, go ahead now.
Okay. Thank you for having me here today. Town President Carroll, Counselor Breyer, Counselor Costel, Vice President Hung, Counselor Conway, Mr. Cuna, Ms. DeSisto, Solicitor, excuse me, Ursula, Chief DeGrazenza, and to the fire chief. I'm here today speaking in regards to the ordinance limiting dog owners from having their dogs walking in public spaces without leashes. The reason I'm here is because there have been numerous occasions where this has not been followed, and it has led to physical discomfort and potential harm for people. I'm not the only one who's been affected by this issue. I've heard multiple complaints from residents. But I have to say that there have been multiple occasions where dog owners have ignored repeated requests for help in terms of having their dogs leashed, or at times they are defensive and combative. And that is usually after a dog has accosted people, or, "Save Me," for instance. And it wouldn't be an issue if it wasn't for the fact that it's become inaccessible for citizens such as myself to be able to access the beach on a regular basis, even though we are all equally taxpaying citizens. It is inhibiting the ability for people who have chronic health issues, disabilities, and/or injuries to be able to walk safely on the beach without fear of being approached by a dog off-leash. And it's also a lack of mindfulness and awareness for people's physical space and personal needs as well. And I, this has been something I've been repeatedly addressed with an assistant to the town manager with the animal control, with the police department, and I wrote a letter to the editor as well. And I also have corresponded via email with the Town Council. And a solution has not been made, so I hope that we can reach one this evening or soon. What I think can help, these are some suggestions on my end, would be having signs, making dog owners aware of their responsibilities at each beach entrance, not just the public spaces, but along the private entrances as well. I live off of Watson, and a lot of the times, these things happen right off of there. And I think it would be extremely beneficial if this was the case. And also, by a tilling-gassed beach, that would be, I think it would behoove the town for that to be there as well, because a lot of people from out of town come, and they don't know the responsibilities. I also think it would be helpful if perhaps a pamphlet or something was sent to all the dog owners within the town to remind them of this ordinance, to help reinforce it so that we don't have to keep calling the police, or that altercations and confrontations don't keep occurring so that everyone is comfortable and able to use the beach safely. And I also think it might be helpful to remind them of reasons why this ordinance is in place, such as it could injure, their dogs could get injured, and they are responsible of taking good care of their dogs. Their dogs could injure other dogs, or get injured by other dogs. Someone, a person could get hurt, or animals could get hurt, or their dogs could get hurt in either scenario as well. And it's a liability. There was one time recently where I was climbing up the stones near Watson, and I assumed this woman who had her dog on a leash was keeping the dog on the leash, walking behind me. And all of a sudden, I turned around, and this dog was running up to me on the stairs. And if I didn't turn around, it might have startled me, I might have fallen on the stones. Excuse me, I said stairs, but I meant stones. And, yeah, it's become unsafe and unfriendly for people to walk on the beach. I think it would be beneficial for everyone to be made aware of this ordinance, and to reinforce it safely, and also mindfully, and with respect to everyone. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. You mentioned earlier that you hope that we could come to some resolution tonight. We cannot act on things unless they're in the agenda as discussed and act. So we couldn't, for example, vote on an ordinance change or something. But we need a couple of very good suggestions that I think the Town Council doesn't need to actually act on, but those are things that the Town Manager, in terms of signage, in terms of maybe including with the license renewals, a reminder about the leash law, those kinds of things don't require council action. So thank you very much for your note and for those suggestions.
Of course, thank you for taking the time to listen to them. Would there be another occasion where it might be voted on? Or, I'm not sure how the procedure is, so that would be my question.
Yeah, so we would need to put it on our agenda, but depending on whether those, you know, the administration has taken steps along the lines that you've talked about, we would not need to put it on our agenda if they've already taken those steps without our actions. But we'll, we can certainly discuss this with our Town Manager, and if need be, we can put it on our next agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
President Carroll, if I could just add, the Chief of Police has taken this. We, as you know, we have a full-time animal control officer, and she has been more focused on the beach, as well as other recreational areas. We have limited control over tilling-haste and down the beach where there's no access to them, so our officers can't get down there. We also have limited ability to put signage down in those areas, because it's, there's no town land down there. It basically goes from private property to the CRMC sites. So I love the idea of putting a reminder in licenses, I think that's a great idea. And we will continue to step up our enforcement where we have access to it.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Ms. Dill, please, go ahead.
Later on, I believe you'll be discussing something else about the CRT curriculum.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I missed it, what you said.
No, I don't, I'm not, I don't want to speak to this issue at this time.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other hands, do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Vice President Hung, seconded by Counselor Costel. Vice President Hung, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Costel?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
I also vote aye, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, item 11, discussing appointments, we don't have any this month. The next one is a public hearing on the transfer of ownership for Billy's, the BV Full Liquor License. This is a transfer from the current ownership of Billy's to 286 Club. I am opening up a hearing into this. Would anyone from the 286 Club like to be heard? Yeah, Frank Camara, please.
I'm sorry, can the members hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Thank you, President Carroll, council members, chiefs, both fire and police, Town Manager Cunha, and Solicitor Ursula, I appreciate giving me the time. I am, in fact, the new owner of the 286 Club. I'm hopeful that you will vote for the transference of the liquor license, and the licenses that go along with the establishment. It was an opportunity that I saw, based upon the previous owners of Billy's and the servants that they had to the town for at least 10 years or so. I'd like to continue that, maybe in a different way, with some different menu items, but nonetheless, have an opportunity for the people of Barrington and the surrounding areas to frequent the location and to enjoy it as they have in the past.
Okay, thank you. Would any member of the public like to be heard on this proposed transfer? This is, this is the opportunity for the public to be heard. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Does anyone on the council want to be heard on this, or wish to make a motion? Okay, I will suggest that we, I will make the motion to approve the transfer of Florians LLC, which is the official name for Billy, BV Full License, to the 286 Club Corporation, contingent upon all requirements being met and compliant with all Town ordinances and state statutes, and subject to satisfying any debts.
Second.
Motion's been made by myself and seconded by Counselor Costel. Any further discussion? Vice President Hung, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costel?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Congratulations, Frank, and good luck. We're sorry to see Barbara go, but looking forward to something new in that spot. Thanks.
Thank you, President Carroll and council members, I appreciate it, hope to see you there soon.
The next item on our agenda is a public comment. This is a three-minute statement to the public to address a matter that is not already on the agenda. If you'd like to be heard, please say so by raising your hand. And when you're recognized, state your name and residency for the record. Yes, Counselor Breyer?
I just wanted to ask if something is on the agenda but not listed as discuss and act? Should people in the public speak to that now? Or will they have a chance to speak to any item that comes later on in the agenda?
They can speak during the agenda, they'll have that chance.
Okay, thank you.
The first person is Paul Dolchinos.
Yeah, that's Paul Dolchinos, 21 Walnut Road. I just want to bring up a few things. First thing, I guess, is I'm a little perplexed at how things get on the agenda when we make requests. At the very least, I would imagine our correspondence should have ended up in the section there with receipt items as well. Well, we had requested, the Barrington United Veterans Council had requested that an alternative critical race theory webinar be sponsored, or at least provided enough support, the same support that was extended to the Imbram X Kendi event that was held on the 26th of April. We feel that Kendi is somewhat biased, and his, you know, his opinions don't represent all individuals on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And to be more inclusive, we think it would be appropriate to have an alternate event. Also, people can hear at the side of the story about where you don't need to use discrimination to fight discriminations. We would like it, our ability to also have our event, you know, published on the websites of the library, their newsletter, as well as the town website as well, so that individuals in the public will be aware of this event. It'll be at no cost to the town, will not use any taxpayers' dollars. In combination with that, we also have a book donation of, it's called, it's a report about the new anti-Semites. We had been working with the Town Manager and the library to get our books disseminated, except somehow there was a snafu, and the books, after only four days, are being put out on the curb. So we are concerned that those books were not given an opportunity also to be advertised at the library website and their newsletter, like the Kendi books were represented on that. So I think it's important that we have equity and the ability to get messages out that represent all of the community, and we feel that it's important that, you know, our book also. So I'd like to get that extended somehow, so that we can get those 100 books still delivered up and through the 23rd of May, which would be the culmination of when we would have our RT event webinar as well. So it'd kind of be, it would mirror the same timeline that was just given in April with the Kendi event. And I think that that would be appropriate to have that shared, the same, you know, same timeline, same curtsies extended, to, you know, to be more inclusive in our community. We need to be inclusive, and we always talk about diversity of thought. And if we can't seem, if we're just sending out only one message from one side of the issue, then basically, we're not helping people critically think. We're not giving them all the information so they can come to their own decisions on a complex matter as diversity, equity, inclusion. Instead, what we're doing is we're indoctrinating. And I don't think that's probably the appropriate role for the library, which should extend all views to be expressed within that facility. So I would like some sort of support from the Town Council, the Town Manager somehow too, so that we can get this resolved, and that we can have this event properly supported going forward for the month of May. The other things is that I just wanted to announce that we will be holding Memorial Day event at 9:00 AM at Victory Gate. We have a guest speaker, it'll be Captain Peter Hewitt, US Navy retired. That should kick things off at 9:00 in the morning, to give people time for to attend any events that the town might be holding on that same day. So we'll be doing a brief laying ceremony, and look forward to having the community attend that as well. Pretty much covers, I wanted to cover. Thank you.
Yes, sir, please go ahead.
He needs on mute, President Carroll?
Ah, there, I just did it myself, hopefully.
Yes, we can hear him now.
Okay, great, thank you very much. William Jacobson, 31 Barron Road, also the president of the Legal Insurrection Foundation, which is based in Barrington. And we have, are one of the sponsors of the event that Paul was just talking about. And I would also encourage the town to give it the same treatment that the Kendi event gave. I was the one who put together the list of speakers for the event. I've heard most of them speak before, they are extremely knowledgeable, and they take another approach. They do not take the Kendi approach to fighting racism, they focus on other issues. And I think it's something that the town, as a matter of fairness, should promote equal to how it promoted the Kendi event. There's no cost to anybody to attend it. The cost of the event is being footed by my foundation. And I just would hope the Town Council would not only allow it to be promoted on equal footing as the Kendi event, but I also would like to extend a personal invitation to each of the Town Council members to attend that online. I think you will find it extremely informative, extremely polite, extremely, you know, educational. And I think it might give you and others in the town a different perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Anyone else from the public want to be heard for public community? Seeing no other hands, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is a presentation, let me just make sure I got that right. Presentation, Small Business PPP and Relief Grant from Rhode Island Commerce. Jim, could you introduce our presenter?
We have Ben Mays here from Commerce RI. Ben, are you listening?
Hi, yes, can people hear me?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mays, please, go ahead.
Great, well.
We lost you.
I promote this, Ben.
Can people hear me now?
Yes.
Great, I think the video is still tuning in. First of all, I just want to thank everyone for inviting me tonight, really appreciate it. Just by way of introduction, my name is Ben Mays, and I'm a policy advisor at Rhode Island Commerce. Tonight, I'm representing Commerce in an effort to essentially increase our ongoing effort to increase communication and collaboration with municipalities across the state. The primary items that I want to speak to this evening are with regard to a number of business support programs run by both the federal government and the state of Rhode Island as well. The first item I'd like to touch on is Rhode Island's Small Business Relief Grant Program. This is a small business support program that provide grants up to $5,000. Applications closed this past Friday, and we're really happy to report that the program was very successful. And we, in fact, reached our goal of support across the state. And I believe, I don't have any figures in front of me right now, but anecdotally, I believe that there was strong participation in Barrington, which we are, of course, very happy to see. So we are continuing to work through these applications, through the review and the funding stages right now. So businesses in your town will likely hear from Commerce or a partner in administering the program, CRF USA. If they have applied, they should hear more on their application process and where they stand. stand. If anyone has any questions, they're more than welcome to call Commerce at 401-521-Help, or they can email us at info@commerceri.com. The next major item I wanted to touch on was the federal government's Paycheck Protection Program. This is run by the federal government. And essentially what it does, as many of you probably already know, is it supports up to 2.5 months of payroll or other qualified expenses. Even if a business received funding in 2022, they're still eligible for additional funding through the second draw of PPP. And it's open through May 31st of this year, but we've heard that funding is running low. So we're strongly encouraging businesses that have not yet applied to apply. The application process is essentially done through banks. And even if a bank doesn't have a relationship with a bank, or if their bank is not currently processing applications, we have a list on Commerce's website of banks that are willing to, you know, initiate these relationships to move people through the PPP second draw process. And we have a list of these banks available at commerceri.com/help. And we know that the PPP process is really difficult, certainly more difficult than it probably should be. So we're working with a number of CPAs and other financial professionals to help small businesses apply to the PPP program at no cost to them. So we have these services available in English, Spanish, French, Portuguese, and a number of Asian languages. And of course, additional information on how you can get additional technical assistance if you are a small business owner who wants to take advantage of this program is available at commerceri.com/help. I want to be conscious of everyone's time, so there are just a couple more items I wanted to quickly mention. There are a number of other programs that are either, you know, currently open or they're on the horizon. There's the Restaurant Revitalization Program, which is providing key supports from the federal government for restaurant owners. It covers losses of revenue up to $10 million that, and so it's a really great opportunity. Small restaurants, chains, they can all apply. And the Rhode Island Hospitality Association is supporting businesses across the state with applying to this program. The next one I'd like to hit on is the Shuttered Venue Operators Grant Program. This covers losses up to 45% of revenue, that's, you know, direct revenue loss related to COVID. There are a number of restrictions on program eligibility. So if there are any organizations in Barrington interested in applying, they should reach out to the SBA, or they can reach out to Commerce as well to learn more about their eligibility. The last item I want to mention is the State of Rhode Island's Child Care Stabilization Fund. This is a Rhode Island-run program, and it provides stipends of up to $50,000 for childcare providers and childcare businesses. And I have a link that I'd be more than happy to share with the council. Reading the URL would probably take two minutes, but I'd be happy to share that for those who would want to apply to that program. And those are, those are all the items I wanted to touch on. Really appreciate the opportunity to share this information and thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mays. Any member of the council have a question for him? Yes, Counselor Costello, please.
Sir, do you have any sense for, if a business is applying for, say, the restaurant program or the shuttered venues program, how long is that? How cumbersome is that process? One thing we run into is if you, if a business is looking at it, well, how much am I likely to get covered? What am I likely to get out of it? I have to also consider how much time I'm going to take away from my business to actually go through this process. So even with the assistance of a CPA, could you just walk us through typically what that process is and what a business owner can expect?
Yeah, so I mean, I will admit that I'm not intimately familiar with the application process. You know, I do believe that it's a little bit more involved than, say, the PPP process, but there's significant funding that is available. Anecdotally, I've heard some shuttered venues in the state have received considerable money through the shuttered venues operating program. So, you know, I can't speak to the particulars of the application process. I do believe it is, you know, it is a little bit involved. But, you know, we're providing assistance and the Hospitality Association is certainly helping impacted businesses go through that process. But I'd be more than happy to follow up with you, you know, later on this week with some additional information.
If they're going to have, let's say, a CPA help them, can they get that on request? Or is it, do you have to go through a process to get to that point where you have a human helping you negotiate it?
There's a little bit of a, there's a little bit of a process to be connected to technical assistance, but we try and make that as streamlined and simplified as possible.
Thank you.
Counselor Breyer, please.
Yes, I had heard folks wondering about when the forgiveness for the PPP is happening. Is it, are they waiting until the second round closes before they start forgiving the first loans? Seems to be much longer than the first time around.
Yeah, so I'll be very blunt. I'll have to follow up with you on the particulars of that, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mays. We appreciate your contribution.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Next item on our agenda is Adam Mastoon's presentation. He is our diversity, equity, and inclusion consultant, and he's been working with us through these COVID times and has a presentation for us. Adam, please, go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Breyer. So Jim Cunha, I, hang on just a second, because I need to see my screen as well. And, ah, got it. All right. Beautiful. So Jim, if you can just stick on there for just right now, actually, if you can just stay on the cover right now, I'll get there in just a minute. All right, thank you. So thanks, President Carroll. It's true, it's five, five months have gone like that. And I first just want to thank you, President Carroll, and Vice President Hum, and Counselors Breyer, and Conway, and Costello. I'm really glad to be here with you this evening. I'm kind of blown away that five months have passed, but I'm really eager to share with you the final DEI consultancy report with all of you and with everybody this evening. And as this is my final meeting of the consultancy, I'd just like to begin with some thanks. And I really want to acknowledge the entire town council. And as I had the opportunity to do the other day, along with the immediate past town council as well, I really want to acknowledge you all for bringing this important exploration forward and for your service to the town in making this possible. I think this is essential work, and I really want to acknowledge all of you for that. And I also want to acknowledge Jim Cunha, our town manager, and Marianne Olivera, Jean Bellum, Mary DeSisto, Chris Chin, and Solicitor Osillo for all of your support over the past five months. It's really been a pleasure to get to work with you all, and you've made my job here much more graceful. So thank you all for, for your help. It's critical for me to thank and to acknowledge our 39 town stakeholders. These are 39 people who've dedicated five, six hours of their time and their energy toward this exploration. And I'm incredibly grateful to each and every one of you for your efforts, which not only added to this exploration, but are really integral to all of the recommendations into the process. So thank you, and we're going to, in a moment, be able to see all of your names, their names, so that if people in the town don't know who those people are, that we can really acknowledge them for their time and for the gift that they gave to the town. And finally, I want to say for myself, thank you for the opportunity to be of service to the community in this way. I believe so strongly in this work and in what we've accomplished so far. So I'm going to walk you through the report, and then after that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. So, so Jim, if you can go to the first page, I want to just say briefly that, that as a group of stakeholders, we did our six Reflect, Relate, and Reform sessions. And I've spoken about what those were before, but what I want to say, what I want to say about them now is that they're also a template for the town for work that can continue to be done. The essence of what's built into each of them, the reflection and the relation, people coming together to get to know one another, those things, learning, having programs where people can, can learn and think differently about DEI. The work is embedded into those sessions, and so please know that they can be useful to the community beyond those five individual, or six individual sessions that have, that will have happened. If you could go to the next page, please, Jim, that would be great. So here are our stakeholders, and again, I just can't say enough, you know, everyone is really busy. That's, we know that for sure. And at a time like this, to dedicate hours and hours of time to your town because you care about what the community can be and will be, is really special. And so thank you to each of those people. And if you know one of those people, please be sure to tell them thank you as well, because it's really critical, the time and the energy that they've all put in. If you would go to the next page, please, Jim. So if you just stay at the top, that'd be awesome. Thank you. So, so basically, you all, you all gave a very specific objective in the RFP. And that was, the question was to support the town of Barrington in determining if and how to create a town government committee focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion, along with other recommendations to move in that direction. And so I took your, your lead and the request of that objective very, very much to heart in creating the proposal. And I want to now come back with you and tell you, share the if and the how with you, as well as a why about the work. So what I think is, is really important to say is that while I have expertise in this work, the work is not about me. So I felt that it was really important that the center of the work be about the stakeholders and about the other people who contributed to the program, who I had the opportunity to interview and to really hear their ideas. So the answer to if the town should have a DEI committee comes from the perspective of 72 Barrington community members. And those are people who come from a really broad and diverse segment of the town. They varied in age, in race, in their status, in their student status, their marital status, their family structure, their gender, their gender expression, their religion, their sexual orientation, their ability, their ethnicity, the amount of time that they lived in the community, and their viewpoints. And so those are the people who have, who are answering the question of if there should be a committee. Want to be very clear that that's not me. That's these 72 people in the town. And 90% of those people who I queried said, yes, they would be in favor of there being a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee in town. And 10% of those people queried said that they were opposed to the idea of there being a committee. So it was indeed the greatest consensus of the community of these 72 people whose idea it was to have a committee. And so all of the information that I'm going to share with you in these first two sections about the if and the how are the synthesized ideas of those 72 people. So with that idea in mind, the offering from those 72 people is this proposal for a mission statement about the creation of a committee. And that is that the Barrington Committee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion shall be created to serve as an advisory group seeking to ensure a welcoming and inclusive community for all Barrington residents, especially for those who experience discrimination or marginalization. The goal of the committee is to create and provide recommendations for inclusive and equitable policies to the town of Barrington, and to support and celebrate multicultural community through collaborative initiatives, education, and outreach. So that is to answer the if aspect of the question. That is how those 72 people answer that question for you all. And then the next part really is the how. How should that be done? So I want to say that the how of the presentation are simply a series of guiding principles. Those are not meant to be voted on because those aren't, those are simply guides to offer for the, for a committee that can be formed. I think it's really micromanaging to tell a group of people who don't even exist yet, this is what you must do. And I don't think it's good leadership. I think whoever leads that committee, we simply wanted to say, I simply wanted to say, I have heard so much great wisdom from all of these 72 people. Here are some guiding principles to share with you all. And there are 15 of them, and they are as follows. To create a committee of 10 people who demonstrate a desire to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion, remembering that we can best lead others where we have been ourselves. A committee, remembering that a committee is a creative process, and that we have to be willing to find our way, to make mistakes, to get it right and to get it wrong, to continually course correct, and to remember that committees can change and evolve, and that the work of diversity, equity, and inclusion is a marathon and not a sprint. The third guiding principle is that the committee should generate a clear set of goals, measures of accountability, timelines, and target dates for completing their actions. And the fourth is to listen, to listen, and to listen, and to listen some more, because we have to allow people to speak and to be listened to with respect and with reciprocity. Diversity, equity, and inclusion needs to be grounded in collaboration and the willingness to learn together. The fifth principle is that the committee should gather data to help guide its explorations and understand the community as a whole. The sixth is that the work of DEI requires focused attention and more time than a committee or a volunteer, a group of volunteers can accomplish. The suggestion is that the work of this committee should be guided by a part-time or perhaps even a full-time town employee, and that this should be an individual who's solely focused on these issues. I want to just take a brief moment to say here that for full clarity, there is no self-interest in this whatsoever. I am not the person for this job. I'm not thinking that I'm the person for this job, and there's no hidden self-interest in that. This is a recommendation from someone else in the committee. Going on with number seven, a guiding goal of the committee should be to make sure that our residents, especially those in marginalized communities, feel welcome and safe to fully express who they are. The eighth guiding principle is that it's really important not to put the work of diversity, equity, and inclusion on the shoulders of marginalized people in the community. Community allies need to be on the front lines of this work. The ninth principle is that the committees should work to create greater awareness, visibility, and recognition of all communities by adding, excuse me, diverse religious and ethnic celebrations onto the town calendar. Hang on, grab a sip of water. Number 10, the committee should partner with the Barrington Public Library and other local, local organizations and community centers, like the Bay Spring Community Center, which has expressed willingness to participate in this initiative. The 11th is that there should be a collaborative working relationship between the DEI committee and the town council with a really clear understanding that the final decisions remain with the council. The 12th is that a committee should create ongoing trainings and presentations and learning opportunities, both for itself and the town, including a including events that explore unconscious bias and systemic racism. The 13th is that it's important that the committee undertake meaningful actions rather than just making symbolic gestures. The 14th is the suggestion that the fundamentals of kindness and curiosity and community guide the decision-making of the committee. And the 15th, and the final one, is to help Barrington really stand out as a community where diversity, equity and inclusion are hallmarks of the town. So those are really the if and the how. Those are the guiding principles of the 72 people that I had the great good fortune to learn from and to hear from. And finally, there is a why to this equation. And, and those are ideas that I'd like to share with you that are my, that are my own thoughts about this process. So if you just give me one second here. Okay. So ultimately, as we're coming to the conclusion of this work, what I would really ask you all to consider is what kind of community do we want to envision for our kids and for everyone? You know, where the work of diversity and inclusion is concerned, I think it's just essential that we put young people at the center of the conversation. I think we, we'll always go right if we put our kids at the center and we work on their behalf. And you entrusted me to hear and to hold the sacred stories and experiences of members of this community. And those stories include the experiences of, of young people who are working to find their way in the world, some of whom are really struggling and some of whom are really thriving. Along with that, I heard the stories of young adults who are able differently. I heard from trans kids and families with gender non-conforming kids. I heard from African-American young people and young people of color, Asian kids and young people from gay families and straight families, families of all sorts of constellations and so much more. But what I heard from, more than anything from these young people or from the parents of these young people, is that they wanted to be seen and heard and understood with a genuine sense of positive regard. And I think as adults, that's our job in community. We're accountable to the young people in our community to hold them with positive regard and help them to feel seen and understood. And I know that that makes a world of difference in the life of young people. And I know that it would have for me had I grown up in a community that had a committee that valued diversity and inclusion. So I really ask all of us again to ask the question, what do we want to build for our young people? Because we can create communities that deeply value difference so that it becomes really a point of excellence for what the community can be. And Barrington is a community that is known for educational excellence. If you ask anybody about Barrington, it's one of the very first things they'll say, we are known for educational excellence. So what I offer to you all is, could Barrington also be known for inclusive excellence? Could that be a hallmark of this town? And inclusive excellence is built when we understand that the community's highest good is grounded in how it values and engages the full membership of the community. And inclusive excellence can really be a goal to guide, to guide Barrington. It can be a principle, a guiding principle for this town. So I encourage all of you and all of us to imagine greatly, to dare greatly and to do what Pulitzer Prize-winning author Isabel Wilkerson calls, "Lead with radical empathy." So I want to leave you with this notion that we can let diversity, equity and inclusion define this community. And I really hope that you will vote to establish a committee with the mission expressed by the majority of the participants of this program. And I, I really look to see what you can do next with their genius and their wisdom. And I am so glad to answer any questions and so happy to be in this process with you all.
Thank you very much, Adam. We appreciate this presentation and all the work that you've done. I think the exercises were not just valuable in leading to this proposal. I think the exercises by themselves add tremendous value. So I'm grateful for that. We have some, I want to, I want to open this up to everyone for discussion. We've, I'm sure got some attendees who would like to speak on this. Because I, I want to make sure that we're respectful of everyone's time. We are going to maintain the limits that, that are in our, our rules as a council of three minutes for each person. We'll let you come back and talk again, but if, if you can limit your, your statement to three minutes so that we can, we can try to get to everybody. Paul Dolcinos has his hand raised. Please, Paul, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Initially, I was fairly optimistic about being appointed as shareholder in this particular organization. However, as time progressed, I discovered that people of my particular viewpoint was the extreme minority with only five individuals out of the entire group coming from Republican or Libertarian backgrounds. And so what, what transpires, eventually this just became theater and turned into an echo chamber. And then it culminated with the promoting of a divisive, critical race theorist to come speak in an event to our community. And ended up being endorsed by the town council and supported by the public library. All of the guest speakers were all of the like background. They all represented the same voice. And, and what this all became all too clear is that this was a foregone conclusion that we were going to come up with a result, that there should be a standing DEI committee. I know I brought up many times diversity of thought. This only received lip service. It would have been beautiful to hear from a conservative minority of various backgrounds and how they feel it's often harder for them to come out as Republican than it is to come out as gay or as dealing with being a black man. Just look what happened to Portman Scott when he speaks up his mind and what happens to him in the press. So I mean, if we're not careful, we create this, this monster or we're not careful in how we select members, it'll just kind of serve as a purpose, you know, to indoctrinate the community or, and then force some sort of woke will on the community. And I, I think that would serve no purpose and that would just continue the divisiveness and the, and the disunity that already exists in our community. And we need to try and bring ourselves together. And if this is not crafted correctly, this DEI committee, standing committee could just end up, you know, further dividing us and just putting salt in already open wounds. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public or from the council? Yes, Vice President Humm, please.
Yeah, thank you. And Adam, thank you for your presentation. I, I had one question of clarification as the council will discuss this further. When you talked about some of the statistics in terms of what went into your recommendation with respect to, I think I wrote it down as the Barrington Committee on Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Is, so is, is the recommendation that it is a formal town committee or that there is a committee formed within the town, one way or another, that would explore those types of discussions? I do recall from some of the meetings that we had that there were discussions about whether it's an actual governmental town-based advisory committee or whether it's an independent advisory committee. And I'm wondering if kind of in the, the numbers and the, the statistics reflected that as well?
Yeah, thank you so much for asking. There are, as best as I know, one or at least two DEI committees in town that are, that are part of the, the community at large. The, the request by these group of people was that there actually be a committee that was connected to the town. That it was, the, the request in the RFP was to explore, should there be a town committee? And a town, you know, a town council committee? And that's what this request showed from people.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
Thanks. Anyone else from the council? Okay, Council Breyer, please.
I'd just like to say thank you, Adam, for all the work you put into this. I know it went far above and beyond the initial scope that, that you had expected or anticipated. The extra time you took speaking directly with people beyond the stakeholder sessions, I think, was, was substantial and I think probably added, added a lot to the overall recommendation. I, I agree with the, the endpoint and I look forward to discussing this further. Maybe hopefully next meeting, we'll have the opportunity to discuss and act on this.
Thank you. Jack Siegel, Mr. Siegel, please.
Sorry, I still haven't seen any statistics that bear out that Barrington has a problem with incidents of hate. I, I just, I've never seen it in the 11 years I've lived here. And I don't know what the goal is if we're not addressing specific incidents and what the systemic, where's the system that we're going to be talking about. It all seems very general. And I don't understand how something that's so general and unfocused is going to be effective. I also had, didn't hear people of faith included in this discussion, nor did I hear the word neurodiversity. And I do question how this group was chosen, who gave out the invitations, who chose not to be on this committee? And it seems like it's being manufactured to fit in with some agenda. And I would just like to see some concrete results and some concrete reasons for all the time and money spent on this issue. Thank you.
Okay, so Jack Van Leeuwen, please.
Say that again?
Well, Mr. Van Leeuwen, I'm calling on the next person.
Good evening, council and everyone that's tuned in. I just wanted to, to jump in and as someone who was on the stakeholder committee, thank Adam for everything he's done to guide us through this process. It was, as, as President Carroll mentioned, it was a very good process. I think it, it allowed us to really dive into some of our own biases. It allowed us to connect with some of the other community members that we may not have had a chance to talk to in the past. I really want to, you know, echo this idea that we, we do really need to have diverse members on here. We need to have, you know, members from various points of view. You know, both myself and Mr. Dolcinos were on this panel. I would say that we probably couldn't be further apart in our political views, but that I do think that each of us deserves the same amount of time to speak and share our points of view and be part of this conversation. And I think that we need to really take the time and, and the effort. And, you know, as, as Adam has said, you know, the messy process and the mistakes that we're going to make along the way. But as I've said many times, we have to take the time. We have to make the effort. We have to do this. This town has been around for a very long time. It is not a perfect town, but it can be a great town. And this is something that we can do to really help with the reputation that it has around the state and the region, to be a more open and inclusive town and a place that frankly, I would be very proud to raise my multicultural family in. And I'm hoping that everyone can support this. So I would like to just ask if someone on the council can speak to what exactly the next step in the process is going to be? It wasn't really clear after Adam has presented how we were going to decide on moving forward with this. So if someone would just take a moment so I'm more clear on that process.
Sure. Adam's made a recommendation to the town council that we form this committee. Tonight, we're going to discuss that issue and what we can do from that committee. And then at our next town council meeting, we will come up with a motion to vote on, certainly on Adam's proposal, but there may be other additions to that based on the discussion tonight. And then after that, we will be, if, if it passes as a council-created committee, we would need to vote to populate the committee. So Vince Wicker, Mr. Wicker, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm traveling this week, but I couldn't tear myself away from joining this particular meeting. I wanted to thank Adam for the work he did and help, helping put together. And I really want to extend my thanks to the town council for helping assemble and having this conversation. It is very, I don't know, disheartening to me that members of this assembled body, this, this, this diversity stakeholder group, take it upon themselves to know what's so good for us, to tell us that they don't, they know what's good enough for us, what's political theater and what's not, what involves what's not true and that. The fact that they themselves, as, you know, who they are, feel a need to say they don't see the problem, they don't hear the problem. If they don't see the problem, they don't hear the problem. It must not be a problem. From where I sit, this is something that is impacting how the city, town, how the town views itself, how the downtown views its other people in the town, the other people in this town. And maybe it shouldn't be an inclusion committee. Maybe it should be a, you know, a thing, a committee, a belonging committee. Because inclusion implies the fact that you're inviting somebody to your party and they ultimately have to leave. We're here, we're taxpayers. We understand that there is an issue. We have children and we want to raise them. And everyone's children need to be prepared for the outside world. The demographics are changing and you can white knuckle, hold on to an old world thought as long as you can, but this world is changing and we need to change in the right way. So I'm fundamentally disappointed by the comments by Jack Siegel. It's insulting. And our, our head of the United Veterans Council is not demonstrating that this is a council that stands for what the veterans are. I have a family full of veterans and I know they don't feel like this. But if that's how the veterans feel in Barrington, so be it. But I know that we have an issue that needs to be dealt with. It's not critical care. It's urgent. It's something that we need to talk about. We need to be willing to have the hard conversations. And without going over my time, I want to thank you again for this time and enjoy the rest of your time here. I'm going to go back to visiting my family. Take care.
Thank you. I, I may get this statistic wrong because I'm not sure what the latest are. But to answer Mr. Siegel, the, he hasn't seen statistics. 0.08% Barrington's black population, 0.08%. Nationally, it's something like 13%. This is a problem in Barrington. We're not diverse enough. And it means that we're not And it means that we're not as welcoming as we could be, our kids aren't growing up in and learning to live and as diverse a country as they ought to. That's a statistic and and that's an issue that that we want to address. And and why is it? I I don't know why it is, but maybe maybe the goals that we kind of started out with, which are to be a more inclusive, a more diverse, a more welcoming community, maybe those goals, if achieved, could change that number. So that's, I I thought that was a sufficiently concrete number to to raise. Wafa Fraj, please.
I just want to reply, thank you first for discussing this. I want to reply quickly to the community member who said that he doesn't see any problems. Just because a person doesn't see the problem does not mean it doesn't exist, we all know that. Just because you don't see lid doesn't mean it doesn't exist in my world. And this I'm gonna give you an example. I'm I'm in from my profession, I'm a social worker, I have two two, two of my coworkers actually used to live in Barrington, they went to Barrington High School, and there were a lot of discrimination and racism and microaggressions against them. I'm happy to bring them next time to speak about that experience. And the other thing, I I work in a school in Providence and three of my previous students who graduated from that school from Providence were actually at VHS in town and they had to leave town with their families due to microaggressions. Thirdly, I have three kids, I am a Muslim woman who is proud of my religion, okay? I work hard, I work 50 hours a week, I pay taxes. And I have been told many times, you don't like it, you get the F out of this town. I'm not leaving this town. My kids had to change their names, had to change their first and last name because kids in Barrington schools made fun of them. So I would like to have a discussion one-on-one with the people who are saying that there is no problem in town. There is no problem in town, comma, there is a problem in the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Wafa. Catherine Quinn, please, go ahead.
Okay, I think that's, okay, thanks so much. Um, I will do my best not to cut out, which I have no control over. I just really appreciate this this work that's being done. I wanted to just try to address some confusion in a way that's maybe like an example from my own life of how a problem can really, really exist and we cannot see it. So first of all, I want to say that what we're looking for is we're looking for something which is called positive peace, and that's the presence of justice. And what I think I'm hearing described here tonight is the presence of negative peace, which is very, it sort of lulls us into a feeling of like everything's okay, which is the absence of conflict, but also the absence of justice. And I think that Barrington had been in quite a, you know, period there of some negative peace, but there was always the conflict for the people who didn't look like me, who were of any kind of diversity. There's always been, you know, racism, antisemitism, homophobia, transphobia, classism, it's crazy out here. And I grew up in Providence. So so what I just want to say is that when I moved here, I moved here with my three young children and a single parent, I'm I'm like a low-income kind of working-class person on my own, I had these three really young children. And this, I want to write a letter to the editor of the paper because this town helped me raise my kids. And my son's about to go to college and my two daughters are going to be juniors. And I couldn't have done it without the help of this town and all the people in it who drove my children around, who brought my kids over to their house for dinner, who took them on vacations, who helped me when I was sick and I had a surgery once, they walked my dog, you know, it's been, it's been like the most incredible experience to live here for me. I have a best friend who also grew up with me, we went to school together, and she's Egyptian, and she lives in Barrington down on down on Lake Neyet. She has two beautiful children, a wonderful husband, and they have a beautiful family. And it came to my attention last year, to my surprise and embarrassment, that, you know, when she moved to her new neighborhood, nobody ever welcomed her, nobody ever brought her, like when I moved here, I've moved a couple of times in Barrington and people come and they bring me food, they reach out to me. It doesn't matter where I am in Barrington, I'm always, always welcomed and cared for, and my children are cared for, I get text messages, hey, I just saw Anson walking over the bridge to school, you know, they they check in with me because they see my kids as their kids. And my best friend, thank you, my best friend, not only has she been subjected to like active aggressions, but she's also lacked that that welcoming. So I just wanted to say that it's not surprising that people like me don't necessarily see it because they're not experiencing it. It's it's also a lack of kindness. Barrington is 94% white and that's a problem. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Ms. Aswad, Hiba Aswad, please. Forgive me if I haven't pronounced your name correctly.
Yeah, my name is Hiba Aswad. I have my mother Nora with me who would like to speak. Well, hi, everyone. Thank you for, you know, thinking about working on the issue of diversity and inclusive, you know, representation. I've been in this town since 1999 and I always thought very highly of being Barringtonian. With my heavy accent, I always felt good, but as time went by, I realized that there is plenty of microaggression that I couldn't understand. I was wondering why things were going in certain directions. Both my kids graduated from the high school in Barrington. They were excellent students, the best behaved, and I'm very proud of them, I'm proud of my husband's hard work and my hard work. I opened a nutrition center, the first in town, then I had to move because of logistics. And we all worked very hard, extremely hard. But as time went by, we realized that it wasn't enough. Being Lebanese, coming from a war-torn zone, we had to leave family and friends and start all over. And we had hope with the American dream and we got our green card from my father who got it from his sister, and it was all legitimate. But now I look at myself, after 22 years, I have no friends. The friends that I had before, they left me and they were very microaggressive in the process. As time went by, it became harder, harder than in the 90s for some reason. And now I wonder if I was cheated of my American dream. Even if I had, if they fixed the road next to us on Watson, a piece of my land was taken just to accommodate the water that was never resolved, that was not going through the drain, and when I voiced my voice, I was made fun of. So I fixed it myself. At the end of the day, I put the dirt myself, I didn't even call the town to fix the lawn after they messed it up for me. It went all straight to the front on my front yard on Neyet Road, and I didn't raise raise my 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 concern. So anyway, also, I have to mention that we changed the last name of the kids to sound less Arab because we're Lebanese and we speak Arabic. I also speak French. My husband is a physician and he's the best pathologist in the whole area. I'm working hard, we all work hard. So being nice to my kids and not having them face microaggression and pure isolation and be left without friends, that's not nice.
That's fine.
I also want to say that I'm working in in forever as a nutritionist and diabetes educator, and I treat all my clients with the highest regards, every one, single of them, single person of them, and these people work hard too. And we are all the vehicle of this country, whether we want it or not. So we present it is nice and to be kind to everybody is nice, it will be enriching to the country. And I thank Barrington for everything that was offered, and I think this is necessary, what you're working on is very necessary, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For your time.
Trinky Brokner, Kathleen Brokner, please.
I'm I'm feeling very emotional, I want to, I'm fighting back tears here after listening to Wafa and Nora. And my heart is just breaking that they have had these experiences in our town and I just want them to know that I hear them and and I'm just sorry. That's it.
Thank you, Trinky. Paul Dolchinos, Paul, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I just I heard my name being talked about here and, you know, here we are, we keep focusing on, you know, equal outcomes and trying to use statistics and things like that, there's not enough veterans in this community, Republicans in this community, there's not enough conservatives in this community, there's not enough, you could go on, on and on. I listen to the library trustee chair and he says, you know, that, you know, my opinion's not valid, and yet he's asking my interest by not supporting the distribution of books that represent an alternative viewpoint. So, I mean, this is all, this sounds beautiful and everything, but, you know, we're focusing on microaggressions, that shows how we've come, that microaggressions affect people. I don't even know what a microaggression is, some psych bubble that's created, in order to beat people around, get them to conform to some sort of mob rule, I don't know. My family's multi-ethnic, we've never experienced any issues. I mean, sure, when I moved into this town, nobody came over to bring me a roast or, I mean, this is, that's the town, this is New England, this is the way it is, I've lived all over this country, and it's it's just different, it's different. And yes, you know, obviously, economics has a huge role in why our town's diverse, it's a secret, but you just can't jam a square peg in a round hole. I hear a lot of anecdotal observations about oppression and things like that. If there is, as they say, why are they not being addressed? There are, there are leading means which you can address these issues, there's avenues if your children are being harassed in the school system, you should be able to go through counselors and principals and the administration, well, we have the structures the way they are. Now they come up, you know, years later, I I don't, I just don't, I think, I think once again, we're we're in search of a problem that's, you know, not there.
Jack Siegel, Mr. Siegel, please.
Kind of disappointed.
You you muted yourself, I think, Mr. Siegel.
Yeah, I'm kind of disappointed that I was called out personally by Mr. Wicker in an attempt to assassinate my character. Many of you on the council know that the only person I've had problems with as a neurodiverse person is Mr. Wicker, who tried to have me removed from the library board of trustees. Unfortunately, he was found to be wrong by legal counsel, as were certain members of the of the town council. It's, the way he speaks to me is in a way of retribution, it's unprofessional, he knows exactly what I'm talking about. And when I say statistics, I'm talking about actual crimes, actual problems. When when people come and call this town racist, it that's a very serious charge and it's defamatory to everybody who lives here. And I think that the council and this commission owe the people real examples. You can't call somebody racist or a whole town racist without demonstrating clear-cut examples. I can tell you, as a father of a child with autism, I have encountered so-called microaggressions and patients, but I've also had some really great people in this town, special education committee, people in Barrington Public Schools, who have gone out of their way to help our family in ways that no other community or municipality would. And I don't think that people give, the majority of people in this town who volunteer more, who pay more taxes, who give more than just about any other place I've ever lived, enough credit. And to constantly degrade this town is to divide us and to create an atmosphere of hostility, which people like Mr. Wicker seem to enjoy doing. Thank you.
Nicole Jelenic, Ms. Jelenic, please.
Hey, everyone, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you to the town council for for having this stakeholder process happen. I was a member of the group and I found it to be a really rich, thoughtful, reflective experience. I actually only wish there was more. And I think, in fact, what this conversation is showing us is that there needs to be more, that there's a lot of, I think, misunderstanding and and we have, we have a real obligation to move forward, that we can't stop here. And so I just want to add my voice to to some of those previously, you know, asking the town council to please consider this committee. I think we can have terrific conversations, I think we can listen, and actually, I think that's probably what we need to do most of, is listen, 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 and learn and work towards being a more welcoming, inclusive community. Thanks.
Thank you. Wafa Fraj, Ms. Fraj.
Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. I'm going to be really brief, so just to comment on the previous speakers, they they referred to our experiences, the microaggressive aggressive experiences as beautiful, and why didn't we come earlier, why didn't we speak to the school counselors? I don't know if you know anything about trauma and complex trauma and compound trauma. It's not the time or place to explain this, but being a refugee and coming out from a place where there was war, like people dying in front of you, and coming to the US, to Florida, then moving here to Rhode Island, you're always on in survivor mode. And what does this mean? It means you just want to go by, you want to, you want to make sure you feed your kids, your kids are clean, they're healthy, they go to school, and you have a job and you provide for them. This is what is called survivor mode. Okay? This is why you don't go think of the other solutions that you provided. I'm I'm just saddened and disheartened that you guys are sitting, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call you guys by names, Paul and I don't know the the other person, I'm sorry, Siegel, I don't know the first name. You're telling me that there is no racism or there's no my, you don't know what's my You're telling me that there is no racism or there's no my, you don't know what's microaggression? Then maybe you can Google that and come back. Seriously, I'm not trying to be rude. I'm just saying, just because you're not aware of such experiences does not mean, again, they don't exist. I'm happy to sit with you in a coffee shop in town and explain to you how things work. How have they been working? For some people and for some people are not. It happens just because of, just, just because you have a different experience does not mean you have the right to undermine our experiences. There's something called empathy. There is something called empathy. And empathy, if I am not going through the same experience and you are, I will feel bad for you. Even if you support someone else politically, I don't care who do you support. I care about you as a human being. If you're putting 100% of your effort to improve your life and your kid's life and you're getting a different outcome just because of your skin color or if your religion or if your accent or if your last name, that is not fair. This is what we're talking about. We're not talking about a racist town. We're talking about a town, sorry. We're talking about a town that is not welcoming everyone all the time. This is what we want. We want to feel welcome all the time, 24/7, 365 a days. That's it. I think it's a human rights. I'm not asking for anything else. Thank you.
I have a question and maybe, I'm not sure Mike Ursillo can answer this question. But, um, my question, Mike, is, um, is there a way for, and you might not have the answer off the top of your head. But if we had a town committee practically, is there a way that, uh, they could receive confidential, uh, or anonymous? I'm trying to come up with a way for folks to report to such a committee some of their experiences. Let me put this more in context. I, I've been very impressed with the exercises that Adam has taken us through and with the willingness of a lot of those stakeholders to kind of share their experiences. I do think that that can be kind of a self-limiting thing because I think there are going to be folks who just don't want to, uh, say anything publicly. Can we somehow accept their input confidentially through a, a town-run DEI committee?
So certainly they could be anonymous. That, that would, that would be the easy answer. Uh, in terms of whether or not there's a way to set up a committee in which um, letters, letters or correspondence could be confidential. Once it gets to the committee, I'm going to have to research some of the attorney general opinions relative to the Open Meetings Act to, to see if there's a way to deal with that and to seek guidance perhaps even from the attorney general's office. But I can certainly have an answer for you in time for, um, your meeting in June when you decide to act on this matter.
Great. And thank you, Mike. I'm thinking of things that can help to inform our discussions going forward. I did, you know, I, I want to open this up to the, the council, but I'm sure that all of us on the council, based on what I've seen in, in these sessions that we've done, view this as a starting point and not an endpoint. I, I, I've had conversations with, with Vince Wicker and, and with others who are stakeholders. And, and that seems to be the message. Let's keep going. Let's keep making progress on this. So, uh, I'm, I'm committed to doing that. I, I think it's, I think it's an important thing. Mechanically, how do we structure that? How can we best do that? Details, we'll, we'll, we'll figure those out, but, um, but I, I am committed to going forward. Anyone else on the council want to be heard? Okay. Okay, um, oh.
No, I was just going to say, I just wanted to thank Adam for his thoughtfulness and his approach. Like Nicole said, I wish we had more of this. I think the town, even just through these last conversations, would benefit from more of this. Um, more connectivity, more empathy, more, um, understanding of each other's experiences. And so I think we were really fortunate to have had the experience where we had such a careful and thoughtful guide in this process. So I just wanted to reiterate and thank Adam for his time and his support.
Thank you. Thanks again, Adam. I think we will, this will certainly be on our agenda for next time. And I really appreciate your work on this. The, the next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on the renaming of the Barrington Community Gardens to the Waymouth Community Gardens. Uh, I, this was my idea. Um, I, I thought that, um, we got to find a way to recognize not just Kate's contribution to the community gardens, but to other things. Um, and I did not talk to her about it. She, uh, found out about it, was going to be on the agenda and has asked that we not change the name. And, and I think she was being very gracious and recognizing that she was only one of, of many people who've made the community gardens so successful and such a, such a kind of gem for Barrington. And I just want to read her email, uh, about this. Dear friends and former colleagues, I just read the agenda item for tomorrow's meeting to rename the Barrington Community Garden as the Waymouth Community Garden. While I'm flattered beyond words, I would ask that you not enact this name change. I'm so proud to have been recognized as one of the founding members of the BCG, as well as my son Stuart, who designed the original, very modest plan. But the existing 60-plot garden was accomplished with the blood, sweat and tears of several community members along with me, namely Cindy Fuller, who mentored Stuart through his senior college product, Bonnie Grassi Hughes, the first person to approach me frustrated at being shut out year after year access to plot at Walker Farm, and Kim Jacobs, whose engineering expertise taught us ultimately how to lay out 60 plots in straight lines. Last year was the first year, this being the second, that all 60 plots were leased to 60 different Barrington household, which was our ultimate goal. We have a deer fence thanks to a grant from the Rhode Island Foundation, a pergola, rabbit proof fence, compost bins thanks to the Eagle Scouts, and a solar pump, solar panels, water tower, and a shed thanks to the town of Barrington. The DPW kindly delivers loads of chips for us to keep the weeds at bay and organic compost to augment our plots, as well as turns on and off the irrigation system each year. We're grateful for all the volunteer work that's been accomplished over the years to make the community garden a special place. Thank you so much for this honor, but I would ask that you not change the name of the Barrington Community Garden because the present name better represents its original intent and one which we have finally achieved. So that's, uh, from, um, Kate Waymouth. So Kate, thank you very much for, um, all your work, not just your work on the community garden, but especially. And we really appreciate it and the town really owes you a, a debt. And this is a very selfless thing to, to do. So, um, I'm, I'm grateful. Uh, does anyone else on the council want to be heard? Okay, seeing, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is to discuss and act on the closure of South Lake Jive. Jim Cunha, can you tell us where things stand?
Thanks, President Carroll. Um, we've asked three committees to give us their recommendations. Um, I received, uh, one before we set the agenda and two were missing. I've since received one, but we're still missing one more input that I've been assured we'll have for the June meeting. So I'd like to recommend that you postpone it so we can get all the inputs we need to make a decision.
Okay. Anyone else on the council want to be heard on this? I'm going to make a motion that, um, we continue this matter until the June 7th town council meeting and that the road remain closed to vehicle traffic with the current signage until further decision of the town council in June. Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. Uh, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Counselor Cusell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on the financial town meeting venue. Um, we have set the, the FTM for June 16th in a previous meeting. Uh, but the, the question is, where are we going to have it? And Jim, we, we've kind of got an update from the governor on, on his restrictions, what he anticipates, uh, it being effective May 28th. How will that, how will that impact our venue?
And right now, as of May 28th, um, the governor will allow 100% capacity in all indoor spaces at venues of assembly with three foot separation between, um, members not of the same family. Uh, with that, the auditorium at Barrington High School holds approximately 700 people. With spacing, we could get well over 300. Um, and the cafeteria holds 300, which allows about another 150 at a minimum. So, um, assuming that there's no, uh, we don't get a huge turnout, um, I think that that will be certainly more than capable of handling the crowd. We could also expand it to the gym if it became necessary.
Okay. Anyone on the council want to be heard on this? Okay, Counselor Castell?
I feel a lot more comfortable with where we are in terms of the numbers, um, in terms of, uh, the positive test rate that we, we can successfully have such an event at that date in June indoors. I would like to be sensitive to the idea that a few people may not be so comfortable and I, and, and just assure people that we will. I would hope, seek to accommodate, uh, such people who want alternative off, uh, options or want, uh, more isolation. Maybe there are people who can't be vaccinated or, or have other concerns of that nature, uh, so that we can have as open a process as possible. Uh, but on the whole, I, I'm, I'm very optimistic about where things are going at this point.
Yes. Vice President?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with Mr. Castell's comments. Um, one thing I noted in the, uh, the letter that the Board of Cambresers put together was the potential for an outdoor, I guess I'll call it like an overflow, um, area or in other words, an outdoor area also for people who, um, you know, perhaps might not be comfortable as Mr. Castell mentioned. Um, I thought that was an intriguing idea, although that brings up, you know, maybe unnecessary weather issues if you have a, a full, um, close to capacity event indoors and unfortunately it is outdoors and it rains, then what do you do? So I'm interested in maybe hearing more about that if, if anybody has any information about that. But, um, I just wanted to flag that in light of, of Mr. Castell's comments and maybe some other comments.
Jim, what about that? The idea that, um, and I'm sure we'll have to talk with, um, the, the school committee and, um, and the administration about it. What about the idea of like a small tent out, outside? Maybe in that area right next to where the picnic tables are, right next to the cafeteria. You know, for anyone who wanted to be outside, that would be an opportunity. I don't know that there'd be that large a number that we would have to worry about it. And we could have someone go outside and collect the ballots if we needed to.
I think we'd have to figure out the technology, but that's easy enough to get it. We broadcast it to the cafeteria. You know, with the numbers that we expect, I would think that the cafeteria would be a safe option for a lot of people because it'd be less crowded than the auditorium. But i- if the council wants to have an outside venue as an alternative, we can certainly work to that end. And by next meeting, I should be able to answer your questions, but I don't see anything, I, obstacle that would prevent it from happening.
Okay. Uh, could you, and we'll, we'll, uh, take it up at our next meeting.
Yeah, one thing I'd like to try and avoid that we did last year was the radio broadcast to the vehicles. Um, that gets extremely expensive with the microphone systems and the broadcast system. So I think as, uh, Vice President Hum has recommended, just a, you know, a tent outside, there'd be some cost to that, but I, I think we could weather that storm easy enough.
Okay. We can look into that, um, for our next meeting. Anyone else want to be heard on this for this meeting? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve Barrington High School as the venue for the 2021 Barrington Financial Town Meeting to be held on Wednesday, June 16th and 17th?
So moved?
Motion has been made by Counselor Castell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Breyer. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Counselor Castell?
Aye.
And also vote aye, that motion carries. The next item on our agenda was proposed by Vice President Hum and this is to discuss and act on improving our community after COVID-19. COVID has brought a lot of changes very quickly, uh, and, and some of them have been good. We've had some opportunities to, to see some great innovation in the schools and in municipal government. But how can we improve our community following COVID? But turn it over to Vice President Hum.
Yeah, thank you, President Carroll. And I, I didn't necessarily want it, um, at least from my own intention on, on this agenda to make any decisions or have any concrete proposals, but more to, more for the discussion aspect of it and something that we don't lose sight of. I think, you know, the, the COVID-19 pandemic was so different and dire in 2020 that there was a lot of discussion in the town to do a lot of really good things and innovative things to, to, essentially to do its best to help its residents and its businesses. And, um, you know, in, in 2021, the, it, it feels like we're starting to see the light out of the end of the tunnel. But it doesn't mean that people are still in, in a difficult spot in terms of what's happened to them as a result of the past year, whether it's, um, personally, professionally, or anything else along those lines. And, um, I know Mr. Castell and I were involved with a lot of those discussions as part of the Economic Development Commission, um, over the last year. And, um, you know, we, we, we tried to make a, a conscious effort to, to communicate, spread the word as best we could, just try to come up with any idea, um, essentially at every meeting we had to, what's the best way to, um, to help the community? And obviously the EDC had more of a, a, a business community mindset, helping the businesses within the community. Uh, but I think that's something that's, you know, it's still, it's still relevant. Um, you know, we, we just had a, a change of ownership, um, earlier in our agenda. You know, it, you know, Billy's, for example, they weren't open for the last year. So what sort of impact did the pandemic have on that restaurant and, and other restaurants? And, um, so I guess, long story short, I, I, I want to make sure that the town is focused on figuring out, are we in a good place? What can we do to, to make sure that, you know, our businesses and residents will be in a good place coming out of this pandemic? And also what sort of lessons learned did we use, did we learn, um, that we used during the pandemic that we can use going forward? You know, like the outdoor dining for restaurants, for example, and some other, you know, uh, technology-based, uh, things that a lot of people and businesses did. So I, I raised it for tonight, um, to get that ball rolling. And one suggestion that I had is to see if we could perhaps lean on some of our, um, boards and commissions. And, um, I, I, I have a few jotted down, but I'm not tied to that as a, uh, an exhaustive list or even the list that it needs to be if, if some of them aren't appropriate. But, you know, what I, I'll, I'll name a few committees and what I'd ask is if the respective liaisons could just reach out to those committees and ask about their next meeting agenda. They could put something on their agenda from their own lens and perspective that they consider, um, issues within the town and see if they can come up with some sort of recommendation or, um, data, if possible, for data. I know that sometimes that's difficult to do and time consuming to do. But, um, essentially any, any feedback they can give that can help the council in its further decision-making process. And some of those committees that came to my mind are Planning, Economic Development Commission, Resilience and Energy Commission, which I think is a critical committee for this, focusing on the resilience portion. We talk about resilience often with respect to, you know, climate change, maybe infrastructure and things along those lines, being a coastal community. But I think resilience in terms of a pandemic or other economic or similar type challenge, um, I think it's just as appropriate for that, for that type of discussion. Parks and Recreation, Housing, Senior Services, uh, those are just some that I've noted. Parks and Recreation, Housing, Senior Services, those are just some that I've noted. But again, that's just that's just brainstorming. So I'll stop there, and I'm interested if anybody has any comments or anything else.
Anyone on the council? I I agree, Rob, this is an opportunity for us to begin to look at what worked and also look at where folks are post-pandemic and if they've recovered on their own. I I know that I'm pleased with with a lot of what's been done. Our town has helped businesses. Deborah Page Trim has worked to help people find those those grants and successfully in a lot of cases. We've, at your suggestion, we, in the Economic Development Committee, we waived fees for a lot of things for businesses. We allowed for those businesses to use our outdoor spaces so that a yoga class could continue, for example, as opposed to having to, you know, make it within the studio and reduce the number of folks who could do it, little things like that. So I I think this is a good opportunity for us to to kind of pull those committees to see how they think we can make Barrington better post-pandemic with the lessons learned from the pandemic. Anyone else? Counselor Brier.
I I I also think it's it's great, it's very important. One one thing I'd suggest with regard to the committees is maybe at our next meeting with every committee to ask them if they can think of anything that they want to brainstorm. Certainly, all that you listed are probably the same ones I would think of, but maybe the people who are involved closely in the work of committees that we wouldn't think of would on their own think of some good things if kind of prompted. So, yeah, thank you for for bringing this up.
Counselor Castell, please.
I would echo Vice President Hum's remarks. And one thing on the EDC that we'd always talk about would be there's a concern about promoting local businesses that have taken a hit. And let's remember, our local business community has been extremely compliant and done an excellent job adapting to COVID and working within the restrictions. That's not always true. And I know of businesses in other communities that didn't do that. We really saw that they 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 took a hit to be within compliance and to contain this virus. And I feel like we do, we do owe them something for that, for sure. But connecting with resources, one thing we talked about, relaxing sign limitations, recycling costs, use of open spaces, these are the kinds of things that would that would often come up. We we have to sift through ideas like that, and I'm not suggesting any one or the other, to decide what we might want to make permanent. And also, what we might want to do maybe as a temporary measure to help those businesses that have taken that hit for us. And I and I think that that sorting process is essential. And I'd also endorse the the specific commissions that Mr. Hum mentioned as well. So I warmly embrace this process. I think it's needed, and and we have to assess the the field at this point.
Thank you. Counselor Conway, please.
Oh, I think it's a terrific idea and love the opportunity for the conversation. I would just caution that we remember that for many that the pandemic is not over, specifically for those who work with children. Children will be the last to be vaccinated, many not until 2022, depending on the results. So there are a lot of organizations and and businesses that are still going through and still very much impacted by the pandemic. And so for those those individuals or organizations or people who may find themselves in a more positive or feel as though they're out of it, I think it's important to remember that there are still many people going through it, and the isolation and limitations may still be continuing for many. So I love the idea. I just think we need to to balance it also with helping continue to pull those up who who need our support.
Thanks. Vice President Hum, please.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Conway, for those remarks. I think that's that's absolutely and exactly right. So, yeah, I'd fully encourage continuing to to support during the the ongoing pandemic and then, you know, also helping to support get through, get out, stay on your feet after the pandemic. And then, you know, almost like a part three is kind of like the lessons learned and improvements we can carry forward. But it is kind of a multi-process, multifaceted analysis, I think. Thank you.
Our town manager, Jim Cooney, Jim.
Thank you, President Cal. First of all, for you, those of you with liaisons on those committees or any committees, if you have them send their recommendations into the town clerk, maybe we can collect them and correlate them so that we can produce them for you in a single document. In addition, I I'd like to remind you that, running in parallel with this, we have the ad hoc committee that I form, which is the American Rescue Plan Committee. We're scheduled to get $4.7 million in funding over the next two years. We're not sure what that can go to. We're still waiting for the hard and fast rules from Treasury regulators. But that there's an opportunity that as these committees come up with ideas that we can funnel, you know, funding to support some of these ideas if it's within the regulation. So I think having that cross pollination of ideas and funding is is definitely win-win for our community.
Right. And I want to echo something that Counselor Conway raised, which is that there are many people who can't get vaccinated or can't get vaccinated yet. And and maybe, maybe it's it's been clear, but we should probably say it again, it's a civic duty to get vaccinated if you can. You have a responsibility to do community. There may be folks who don't want to get vaccinated, but there are people out there, and I know some, we all know some of them, who cannot get vaccinated. So people like my friend Sydney, who's got an immune disease, can't get vaccinated, and he's relying on everybody else to do so. So I just like to remind our our community that that we're, we should all try to do it ourselves so that others who cannot will be protected. Anything else on this this topic? Great. Okay. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on resolutions. And the first one is a resolution honoring Kendall Baserman. And I would ask Counselor Castell to tell us a little about that.
Kendall Baserman is an eighth grader at Barrington Middle School. She is the co-founder of the HMS School Newspaper, as well as the editor-in-chief of the Eagle Gazette at Barrington Middle School. She has continuously served in student government. I think her tenure is probably longer than my tenure in government by a long stretch. And she is also, most recently, the, and most notably, the overall statewide winner of the National Organization for Women Writing Contest for her poem Bold, Brave, and Beautiful. My favorite stanza in that, and I believe we have that in clerk base, if anyone wants to read it, and I'm happy to send it to you, is in 2021, feminism should look like women speaking up, not getting shut down. Stop saying, I'm sorry. Start saying, I'm speaking. I think that Kendall Baserman, Baserman, Kendall Baserman, I'm sorry, Kendall Baserman, Baserman is going to be someone who we are going to be listening to loudly and clearly for a long time. And I apologize, we had a spelling error on the on the agenda, so I apologize, it's Baserman. She will be speaking truth to power for many years to come. And with the leave of the council president, I would I would move that we adopt and read a resolution honoring Kendall Baserman.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Conway. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier.
Aye.
Counselor Conway.
Aye.
Counselor Castell.
Aye.
And also vote aye. Counselor Castell, if you wouldn't mind reading her resolution.
Resolution honoring Kendall Baserman. Whereas Ms. Baserman is an eighth grade student at Barrington Middle School and the 2021 statewide winner of the National Organization for Women Rhode Island Student Writing Contest for her poem Bold, Brave, and Beautiful. Whereas Ms. Baserman co-founded the Hampton Meadows Student Newspaper, currently serves in student government and and also as editor-in-chief of the Eagle Gazette in the Barrington Middle School. Whereas Ms. Baserman is an inspirational example of youth civic engagement. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council of of the town of Barrington does hereby recognize and thank Kendall Baserman for her outstanding literary achievement, commitment to student journalism, and dedication to youth civic engagement to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion, presented by the town council of the town of Barrington, Rhode Island, May 2021.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on a resolution that the Rhode Island General Assembly allowed local control of tobacco policies. And I'd ask Counselor Brier to take us through that one.
Yes, thank you. I am the liaison to the Bay Team, which is our Substance Use Prevention Coalition. And actually, I believe that Tricia Driscoll was planning on joining the meeting to discuss this resolution. I don't see her name, so Tricia, if you're here, if you could raise your hand, and if not, I will do my best to cover it for you. Okay, so this resolution is in support of two bills in the General Assembly, well, one one piece of legislation in both chambers of the General Assembly. And it's a change in the law that would give municipalities the ability to regulate tobacco in their community, as opposed to it being restricted to statewide regulation. And this has specific impact on Barrington because I believe four four years ago or so, the council enacted an ordinance that raised the age to purchase tobacco to 21. And a store and I believe the tobacco industry or representatives from it took took issue with that and were successful in preventing us from being able to do so. Since there has been an executive order, I believe, that raised it to 21, at least temporarily, that might just be with vaping and e-cigarettes. But regardless of the case, the legislation to to provide municipalities with this control, I believe, is is important and move that we adopt the motion, adopt the resolution.
Counselor Brier's made a motion. Is there a second? I will second that motion. Vice President, any further discussion on it? Yes, Vice President Hum, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brier. I had a question, and it might be more a question for Mr. Rosillo. If you know, just one of the recitals in the the resolution discussed that several cities and towns have been sued by the tobacco and vaping industries, including Barrington, et cetera, et cetera, I won't read the whole thing. But essentially, the course of rule that municipalities don't have the authority to pass ordinances or other laws against tobacco products. Do I understand that that's the the basis for the state legislation to allow towns? Then because they've been sued and there's no state law saying that towns can do that, the towns have lost? Or is there is there still a legal issue with respect to that, whereas?
So, yeah, no, no. The the issue is that state law preempts the town and city's abilities to regulate tobacco sales, the ages at which tobacco could be sold, et cetera. There is currently state statute which addresses these issues, and because it's of statewide concern, it basically overrules anything that a local city or town could do. That was the case that we were involved with here in Barrington that went to the Supreme Court, and they they affirmed the the preemption rule. So what this would do is it would have the legislature change that statute to, in fact, permit cities and towns to take different approaches to the sale and and use of tobacco products.
Great, thank you.
Okay, the, yes, Counselor Castell, please.
I, the one hesitation I would have, if we're talking about any kind of a transfer of governmental authority here is, you know, where do our our state reps stand on this? Have they have they formed an opinion? Where does where does law enforcement stand on this? And is that a relevant consideration that we should we should think about or or know something about before we actually vote on this?
I don't know where, Jacob, do you know where our reps?
I I haven't discussed it with them. I I agree that it would be important to know where they stand, maybe on a on a change. Well, where our state reps stand on the state law certainly matters for the state law. But as far as law enforcement, I would be very interested in learning what they would want if we were going to change anything, but not necessarily if we were going to be allowed to change anything. And this is about whether or not we're allowed to change anything.
Do you do you think it would make sense to get input from our state representatives before we we were to vote on this? I'm not taking a position on the merits, I'm just asking.
I would say, I I can't, I don't think I asked him whether he's sponsored or not. But I did talk to Jason Knight about this, and he reported to me that the these bills have been sent to committee, which is, essentially, it it doesn't look like they're going to be reached this year. That's how the General Assembly sometimes puts things aside. But Jacob is looking, I guess he'll probably be sponsors, but I don't know that. I would say that I agree with the idea, like, the idea of having some local control. When there's a, there are areas that where there's preemption and it it restricts our ability to do things. You know, this, it was, I think it was actually six years ago when we bought that, that Wordnto and got sued on it, and we thought we would lose, but we thought it was a fight worth worth fighting for. So we did that. That was our view that we have the right to protect the people under community in Barrington. And because they preempted it, we didn't. Jacob?
Senator Coin is a sponsor of the Senate bill, so she supports it, I'm sure. I don't want to put words in her mouth, but I'm sure if she sponsors it, she supports it. And neither of the reps in the House are sponsors, but it's it's got about six sponsors, seven sponsors. So I think, I I don't know where they stand, but Senator Coin supports it.
Is there any, I mean, I don't want to miss the vote. If there were to be a vote on this, would there be any harm in tabling this till next month? Or, I mean, I'm willing to have a vote if you want to have a vote on it, but I just, I would like to know their positions, if there's anything we're missing from from the state rep perspective.
Counselor Brier, what you?
So the, I don't know the calendar this year for the General Assembly, but generally, by June, they're focused almost exclusively on the budget. And I would think if this isn't isn't taken care of during May, it probably wouldn't I think we can vote on it tonight, and, yeah, I'd like to vote on it tonight.
Okay. So motions have been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier.
Aye.
Counselor Conway.
Aye.
Counselor Castell.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion kept. Thank you. Next item is to discuss an act on a proclamation declaring the first Friday in June National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I would ask Counselor Conway to take us through that.
Sure. Thank you very much, President Carroll. This is an issue that I believe is very close to many of our hearts. And I would like to say that once the pandemic seemed to lessen, all of a sudden, gun violence became another topic, and that's almost the normalization of American gun violence. So So in the first Friday of June would be, is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And so it would be recommended that the town follow suit and that community members wear orange in recognition of Gun Violence Awareness Day. Just a few statistics, that every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, with 230 of those who are shot and wounded. On average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. Unfortunately, we don't know the true details of what that is because the gun lobby has reduced our ability to study some of those specifics. But Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. Gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, which is terrorizing as well, and increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase of city gun violence. The orange, wearing orange is a tribute to Hadiya Pendleton, who was tragically shot and killed at the age of 15 in January 2013. On June 4, 2021, to recognize the 24th birthday of Hadiya Pendleton, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiya and the other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. The idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. And they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. So by wearing orange on June 4, 2021, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe.
Thank you. Would anyone on the council like to be heard on that? I will say too that I have a very clear memory being a child at my grandfather's house, knowing he had a gun somewhere in the house, and how hard I looked for it until I found it. And it was unloaded, thankfully. But that's what kids do. If something is off limits, they're going to look for it. It was a dangerous thing, and I think we need some common sense regulations. So do I hear a motion to pass the resolution as presented?
To move?
You hear a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion's made by Counsel Castell and seconded by Vice President Humm. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conway? Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
I also vote, the motion carries. Thank you. The next one is a resolution on the legalization of adult recreational use of marijuana. This is different than the decriminalization, but the legalization, in a very similar way to how we just talked about with tobacco, a lot of these, the present proposals would remove a lot of local control from this industry. So I'd ask Jim Cunha to take us through this because he's working closely with the League of Cities and Towns, who's taking a position on this.
Right. There are a number of concerns with the legislation. Right now, there are two proposals. One proposal, one is in the governor's budget, and the other one is in the Senate. The House doesn't have any proposals as of yet. But the major concerns that the municipalities have with it is, first off, in order for us to set limits within our own community, the governor's budget requires us to have a referendum in 2021, which is another election in this year, to opt out. The Senate's version has it in November of 2022, which wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an additional election, but we'd still have to hold a referendum to opt out. What that does is it brings in a lot of out-of-town money to support this. In addition, if it's a special referendum, the voter turnout is minimal and only the people most motivated to see it happen, happen. And so we would like the town councils to be able to determine what they want, whether they want to opt in or opt out of the legislation. Just like the state Senator, Senate, and the State House is going to decide the legislation, we should allow our elected representatives to decide how we're going to participate in it. The second issue is local oversight and the cost of that oversight. Whether you opt in or opt out of the sale of marijuana, recreational marijuana, there's going to be a lot of cost to the community in the sense of how we educate, enforcement, those types of things. And what we're asking is that every state gets 3% of the revenue, every community gets 3% of the revenue to support these ongoing efforts, which leads to the public education campaigns that need to be taken place. The other thing is, the state licensing authority has complete control over licensing within a community. And we believe that the town councils and the zoning board should have that kind of authority, not the state, to set those kinds of things. And finally, is management concerns with the workforce? And what kind of controls we have over our workforce? I don't think anyone wants someone driving a snowplow that's been using marijuana prior to doing that. Just like with alcohol, we need to have some controls over this use in the workforce. So those are the concerns. The draft resolution kind of outlines those concerns. And I ask that you support this so that we can hopefully get the legislators on the right track to support the local control of these types of things.
Anyone from the council want to be heard on this? Counsel Breyer?
I agree with the idea of bringing in local control. You know, just, we just passed a resolution to do it with tobacco, and I think we should certainly be pushing for that with marijuana as well. One concern I have with this as written is that last item in the first resolve clause, the employer safeguards. Employer safeguards, as a general rule, I support, I think. If it becomes legal, like alcohol, there needs to be a way for employers to regulate it within their company. If something is, if somebody is impaired by using marijuana, and that makes it either unsafe, either professionally or physically, to do their job, then an employer should be able to protect against that. However, whether or not somebody has a medical marijuana license or not doesn't change whether or not it's safe to be using marijuana when doing that job. And I just, I have a pretty high threshold for when an employer can compel medical information from somebody. And so I wouldn't want that to be one of the safeguards, determining whether or not somebody has a medical marijuana license. So if we could strike that, leave employer safeguards in, but just not the, including but not limited to allowing employers to verify whether employees have medical marijuana licenses. So just employer safeguards must be allowed to ensure a safe work environment.
Just deleting that, you would delete just that clause between the... Anyone else? I have a TR, please, go ahead.
Good evening. I got a question. Jim, you said something about a 3% increase. So if the town decides to opt out, the town would not get any of the 3% money that is being requested, correct?
Well, there's two versions. And one version, the town would get some money, but not as much if they opted out as if they opted in. This version, everyone gets 3%. And some communities may get more, but it lowers the, the 3% is what every community would get to help support education programs and enforcement.
So on the medical marijuana aspect, if people are given medical marijuana and they're able to take it while working, I don't see it as any different as you taking a prescribed medication in order for you to work. Like some medication that might make you incoherent, but not? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I hear the TR. I guess with, striking that clause does not change that. So if someone is taking medical marijuana and it's, you know, they're not subject to a fine now because they have a medical marijuana license, that doesn't mean that you can't test all of your fork truck drivers or all of your Amazon drivers or everybody. And then if someone has that, you can, you could, under this, it doesn't describe how we make a safe work environment. I agree with you. I think if somebody is taking the medication, you know, I've got a friend who had, he wasn't able to drive. It was a medical condition that made it unsafe. It doesn't matter. We don't need to look at someone's medical records. Is that, I think what Counsel Breyer is saying? I think it's just basically...
Most people that are in driving truck or whatever have a CDL license that's regulated by the DOT. And that is not, you can't have medical marijuana. You can't have high blood pressure. You can't do this. So a lot of those are already regulated. So I don't know if taking something out, you, I think it would just have to be included in your work... What's the word I'm looking for? Work...
Environment?
Yes. Or description of your work, you know, what your job is or job description and all that other stuff. I think it needs to be included in that.
One concern is police and firefighters. Firefighters drive those big, heavy trucks, as TRL knows. They don't need, not need a CDL license. And police officers do not get drug tested either.
Right. But technically, when you, it's semantics, really. So basically, an emergency vehicle is only emergency when it's going to a call. When it's coming back, technically, it falls under, you need a CDL license. So I know a majority of the firefighters went out and got a CDL license just to cover their butt in case something did happen, because that is basically a gray law in our eyesight.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, TR. I would add something. Mary, if you're looking at item three, this is mostly just so that it flows in the same way for parallelism. I would delete "we support" before municipal safety grants. So it begins, municipal safety grants, and then I would change the word "expanding" to "expanded." Municipal safety grants and expanded temporary impact fees. And then I would insert, "should extend beyond three months as proposed in the governor's budget." There you go. Go ahead. No, you're on.
I'm striking "we support," capitalize M from municipal, yeah. Municipal safety grants and expand, temporary, expanded. Yep, I have that, sorry.
Expanded temporary impact fees beyond three months.
Should extend.
Should extend. Wait one second. My eyes are like going funny.
I've got it, Mary.
Yep. And I have it too. Okay. Should extend. Yep. Should extend beyond, yep, I've got it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments? You've got the change that I proposed, and then you've got the deleted in item six. Everything...
That's right.
So with those changes, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented and amended.
Second?
Seconded by Counsel Breyer. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
I also vote aye, the motion carries. The next item is "Hate Has No Home in Barrington." I think this was Counsel Breyer's.
Yes, Counselor Lay from Bristol reached out to me and asked if, in light of recent events over the past several months, we had passed or adopted any statements or resolutions relating to hate crimes, vandalism, et cetera. And I said that we've discussed it a lot, but haven't had any formal statements. And he had been working on one. And we, in discussing it, we thought that the three communities, Bristol, Warren, and Barrington, passing a similar resolution, because we've all had, this year during 2021, instances of vandalism, specifically white nationalist or neo-Nazi stickers plastered on signs on public spaces. And he shared the resolution. I tweaked it slightly for Barrington specifically. And welcome a discussion or passage.
Any comments on this from the council?
I was just curious if the other two towns have addressed it or passed a mirroring resolution.
So Bristol meets, I believe their council meeting is either a week from today. I think it's a week from today. This was last Wednesday, I believe, was when he and I finished our discussion on it. So no other has. I know he has submitted this resolution, and it will be on the Bristol agenda for their next meeting.
Which, for the record, is on the 5th, this Wednesday.
Okay. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure where Warren stands.
Anyone else? Counsel Breyer, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Second?
Seconded by Counsel Conway. Vice President Humm, how do you vote?
Aye.
Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
I also vote aye, the motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on bids. This is for the Department of Public Works roadway resurfacing project. So can we hear from our director, Alan Corvey? Alan, I think you're unmuted.
Mike, if, until Alan jumps in, I'll take it. Well, now he's unmuted. Now he's muted. Alan, are you there?
Okay.
Okay, so every year, we put out bids to, for roads, repaving of roads. Some of them are ground, some of them are just resurfaced. This comes out of the bond that we have. This year, we did it by quantity, which it makes it easier for us to expand a contract. We're paying them by the tonnage, by the length of road that we're using. You can see in the memo, the list of the roads that will be repaved this year. There's a total of eight plus, well, nine, including a portion of Maple Ave and Town Hall in the back parking lot, just a portion of that as well. The bids went out. There were seven companies that bid. The Pawtucket Hot Mix Asphalt had the low bid at $716,480. Pawtucket Hot Mix Asphalt has done it the last two years and has done very well. They work well with our Department of Public Works, and they've done a great job with it. So based on their low... Um, so based on their low, lowest bid price and their, their work performance over the last two years, Alan is recommending, uh, that we go with, uh, as proposed with Pawtucket Hat Hot Mix Asphalt Inc. And for anyone that asks, Middle Highway alongside, I'm, excuse me, Lincoln Ave alongside the middle school will be repaved with the state project to redo that intersection. So anyone that's driven down that road knows it needs to be fixed. But that's why it's not listed.
Any questions? Counselor Breyer, please.
I'm just curious, it's, it's not in here, but recently, uh, section of Middle Highway from around federal, um, toward Primrose, and I think a little bit toward the middle school, was repaved on half of it. Um, was that because of utility work or is that just the middle of another repaving project?
All the paving you've seen so far this year, and there are a number of spots, including that location, is all national grid for, uh, gas main replacement work they had done and they needed to finish about.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I, I would encourage, so, um, before Alan, uh, became director for the second time, um, we had some trouble with some of the paving projects. Alan has made sure that they move along quickly and we're not stuck with a road that's torn up for a month or more. And, um, I would, um, and one of the other things he did that didn't occur to any of us, he, he, uh, had testing done at the asphalt plant to make sure that the asphalt was up to grade. And I would encourage him to do that again. I, whatever he's been doing has been great. Um, it's, it's managed to save us some problems and have people.
Yeah, well, the two most important things are the temperature of the asphalt as when it's applied and then the compression. And they have an instrument that measures the compression and last two years we've hired an intern that, you know, an engineering student that follows them around and make sure that they're following the rules and keeping within quality standards.
Right. Um, do I hear, uh, a motion to authorize awarding the bid for the 2021 roadway resurfacing project with Pawtucket Hot Mix Asphalt Inc. in the amount of $716,480?
Oh, okay.
Uh, Vice President Hum, making the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
By, by, uh, by Counselor Costello. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Uh, next item on our agenda are, um, to discuss and act on ordinances. The first, uh, set are for, just for introduction. Uh, TR, please, go ahead. I'm sorry, I missed your hand. Uh, Vice President, please.
I, I just want to point, I should have mentioned this before the meeting. Um, I'm going to recuse from, uh, the ordinance related to the juvenile hearing board as I have in the past, if my wife is a member of that board. And I'll, I'll submit the form after the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, all right, TR has lowered his hand. So the, the, um, the first one is, uh, we have to introduce these at one meeting and then at the following meeting, we can vote on them. The first one is, uh, a, uh, to change some of the rules in our ordinances regarding the juvenile hearing board and make it comply with state law that is on, um, the anonymity and, and privacy of the juveniles. Do I hear a motion to introduce 2021-9, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 20 Juvenile Hearing Board, Section 20-4 Meetings, and to schedule a public hearing for June 7, 2021?
So moved?
Motion made by Counselor Costello. Is there a second?
Second.
By Counselor Conway. Um, any further discussion? Counselor Breyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Motion carries four, zero, two, one, I think, one of, excuse me, one recused. Uh, next item, Vice President Hum is back. The next item is, uh, regarding, uh, removing the masculine or feminine pronouns, um, in the use of gender neutral pronouns in terms throughout the Barrington Code. Counselor Breyer's, um, motion, did you want to say anything on it or just introduce it?
I think just, just introduce it.
Talk about our next meeting. We hear a motion to introduce 2021-10, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 1, General Provision, Section 1-16 Construction, and schedule a public hearing for June 7, 2021.
So moved?
Motion made by Counselor Breyer. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Conway. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
Now we are to the point for public hearings. Um, this is the, um, public hearing into, uh, proposed change to ordinance, uh, Chapter 185, Article 8, Article 7 Signs, 185 dash 6. Now, I am opening the public hearing into this. Um, Counselor Breyer, if you want to, um, this was your proposal, correct?
Yes. So I, um, I learned that our existing sign ordinance with regard to, um, signs placed in, in lawns, lawn signs, um, was, was regulated based on content, which is in violation of the First Amendment. And so, um, I worked with the solicitor's office to come up with a way to, um, regulate it based on quantity and size as opposed to content. And so this would permit anybody, uh, in a residential area to put a sign on their lawn as, as we see many, um, throughout town. Um, people do, um, used, used to be just during, um, campaign season, but now we have a lot of other campaigns that go year round. And so this prevents us from being, um, from having a law that we're unable to enforce.
Okay. Uh, the, it's a public hearing, so TR has raised his hand. I want to make sure. TR, go ahead, please.
Uh, I didn't raise my hand. I had my hand raised for the asphalt thing a long time ago, but it says lowered hand, so. Sorry if it's up. Mine says lowered here.
Okay.
I'll lower it for you, TR.
Okay. Um, anyone from the council? Uh, yes, Vice President Hum?
Yes, well, I, just a, a question for discussion purposes. Um, what's, so if, if the ordinance as it currently exists is unconstitutional, what's the reasoning for introducing a new ordinance addressing the point or simply just withdrawing the ordinance?
That, that, that's a good point. I, um, go ahead, Counselor Breyer.
So, um, I, I guess the idea was to prevent, um, the, the intent of the ordinance was for visibility. As, as you go through town, not seeing signs everywhere, especially advertising signs and things like that. So in keeping with that spirit, I thought, um, setting a, a maximum number of signs and a maximum size of signs made sense. If we take it away completely, um, people would be able to have, you know, a 10-foot by 10-foot sign advertising their business, for example, on their, um, front lawn. You know, there's, you know, good, good reasons why somebody would want to do that. And there's good reasons why their neighbors would not want them to do that. And so I thought this was, uh, striking a good balance.
Um, I, I guess I wonder though, uh, I, I do have questions about, uh, the enforceability of it. Picking that, just picking a number, um, I, this probably requires a more comprehensive look uh, at the sign ordinances in general. Uh, so for example, we are not, um, enforcing a regulation that would require people to take political signs down three days after their election. It's not enforceable. People can keep political signs up for as long as they want. I think probably this would require a more comprehensive look. I'm not sure if somebody put up a sign to challenge us that was, um, this size or a total of 18 square feet or 18 and a half square feet. Um, whether that would survive constitutional scrutiny. I think you probably want to take a more comprehensive and in-depth look at the whole sign ordinance. Um, if somebody put a business sign up, that's probably in a different category. We do have a regulation against that. And that is more likely to be enforceable than, uh, a sign that says, uh, "God bless you." That is 18 and a half square feet. And if we tried to get someone to take that down, uh, we'd get a nice letter from Mr. Steve Brown about that, I bet. So, uh, my, my suggestion is that we take a more comprehensive look. We weighed on this. Um, and we look into having a, uh, overall revamping and addressing of, in light of more recent constitutional questions, um, having introduced this one. Yes, Counselor Breyer?
So the, the solicitor's office felt that this was enforceable. Um, they, they drafted it. And, um, I'm also curious as to why, so it was two months ago that it was introduced. Um, if a comprehensive look was needed, we, we had, we had time.
No, no, I'm sorry. It takes longer than that. It's, it's probably something we need to hire a consultant for. Um, and, and the, I, I mean, in terms of what we want aesthetically, um, certainly in terms of public safety, we can say, obviously you can't have a sign that's going to block someone's turning view or, or something like that if you live on a corner lot or something like that. But in terms of aesthetics, it's very complicated area of law that I don't pretend to understand. I just know that it's complicated. I think we probably need a consultant and, and many months to, to do that. But that's, again, that's my suggestion. I don't think we could do that in two months.
And, um, Mike Grisillo, can you, um, speak to the enforceability of it?
Yeah, so, um, right now you have a sign ordinance which references four different categories of signs that are permitted in a residential zone. Um, one of those is identifying the, the street address. Um, another one permits a professional home office sign in a residential zone. Another one references residential zone properties, which are church, daycare, center, hospital, et cetera, which permits a sign. And, and the last one references club, fraternal, recreation, athletics, social purposes, they can have a sign. So th- those are the ones that are specified in the ordinance at the present time. There is nothing in the ordinance which references other types of sign. Um, I don't know, such as "God loves us all" or "we support whomever." Um, I, I think this was the stopgap thought about having an amendment whereby individuals who had various beliefs would be able to, um, erect such a sign. Now, now I agree, even though it's not in the ordinance, if in fact someone put up signs expressing various beliefs, political or otherwise, our advice to the zoning enforcement officer would be not to, um, send a violation notice to that individual because there are many cases now saying that's unconstitutional. The, the latest example of this would be, um, the town of Portsmouth where exactly, um, this happened and the town, um, eventually withdrew, withdrew the, um, the violation. So this was a stopgap method. I, I know when Amy Goins in my office talked to Jacob, we did talk about the fact that this sign ordinance in general has a lot of issues that need to be addressed. No question about it. And I do agree that it will take several months and it might even require a consultant. The last time we did a comprehensive look at the sign ordinance, it took over six months. Um, there was, there are many, many meetings at the planning board level where businesses and individuals came in to testify. So it's going to be a long process. We were simply trying to address, um, the issue with regard to signs um, and expressing content that are not specifically enumerated in your present ordinance. So this, this was a way to do that. We, we worked with Counselor Breyer and came up with this. Um, so, um, you know, if, if you wanted to take out the reference to the 18 square feet, you simply could do that. Um, otherwise it would just say on premises used for residential purposes, any other sign or signs not addressed in subsections A through D above.
Anyone else from the council? Anyone? This, this is a public hearing. I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand. Okay, I will close the public hearing. Um, uh, any further discussion? Does anyone want to make a motion? Counselor Breyer, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, um, Mike Grisillo, can you repeat the, what, um, what you referenced as, as the possible change to this?
I, I think, um, Jacob, if we just eliminated the last sentence, beginning "any such sign permitted by this subsection shall measure no more than six square feet, et cetera." If you just stayed with the very first sentence, I think that would eliminate the issue about whether or not a sign was 18 and a half square feet, for instance.
Mike, is putting it out there, even you know it's not enforceable, but setting some kind of quantity limit have any value just because most people would comply because that's the rule? Why is not having anything in there?
Um, you could do that. It, it could be challenged. The, the situation that recently just occurred in Portsmouth involved several signs and they were quite large. They were practically the size of billboards. And, um, the, the court decided that that person could do it as long as it didn't interfere, as Counselor Carroll, um, stated earlier, as long as it didn't interfere with such things as sight distance, people turning the corners or being able to see upcoming traffic, et cetera. Um, uh, the reality is you have nothing about it in the ordinance today. So, um, and, and, and again, this would be a very minor first step to an overall revamp or rewrite of the entire sign ordinance because it really does need, um, a bit of attention.
So I guess if, if I could possibly get a, a yes or no, um, to this, do you think this ordinance is enforceable?
I, I certainly think the first sentence of the ordinance is enforceable. On premises used for residential purposes, any other sign or signs not addressed in subsections A through D above. That, I mean, all that basically says is that in addition to what's permitted in sections A through D, any other sign is also permitted. Um, whereas a, a reading now of that ordinance could be the only signs that are permitted are those in A through D as I described to you earlier. This would open it up to other types of signs. I mean, these are the typical First Amendment issue type signs.
Vice President Hum, please.
Thank you. And, and thanks for the explanation. And I think I, I appreciate the, the spirit of what this, um, this ordinance is trying to do. And, and actually frankly, constitutional or not, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to the size limits. The, the reason I, I brought up The reason I I brought up whether to introduce this ordinance or withdraw the, I guess, the overall, um, 185-96 is so essentially what this does is this says you can put up any sign. So in in 185-96, it says you can put up the four signs listed in A through D. And then E says you can put up any other signs not addressed in A through D. So essentially what Section E is saying is you can put up any sign in the world. And my my point is why, why do we need an ordinance saying you can put up any sign in the world? Why don't we just withdraw the ordinance that is is overly restrictive and unconstitutional? That's that that, um, I I think that's the balance that I was trying to to discuss, but maybe I'm maybe I'm missing a point.
I it's important to note that in the A through D signs, since they are not signs related to political speech, there are limits on numbers and sizes. So for instance, if it is a professional home office, the sign cannot exceed two square feet. If it's a church or a daycare center, et cetera, the sign area cannot exceed 25 square feet. Clubs, fraternal, recreation, social purposes, it can't exceed six square feet. So it, the there are limits on the sizes of the permitted signs based on the fact that they are precisely not political speech signs. So just just to throw that out as clarification.
No, thank you. That's helpful.
And in addition to that, if somebody was in, um, a mixed zone and they're using the property as commercial, they wouldn't be able to put up any sign they want. It would only be the business use. Um, I make a motion to, uh, adopt the resolution, uh, as presented.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Dean, is there a second? Okay, seeing no seconds, the motion does not carry. Okay, then the next item on our agenda is the a public hearing into the renewal of the ordinance of declaration of emergency. I'm opening the public hearing into this uh, and would invite anyone from the public to comment on this proposed renewal of the state of emergency. TR, please.
So if you renew the state of emergency, public, when the governor releases everything at the end of the month, does that supersede the town?
No, the town, so the town would declare a state of emergency under the proposal. It would go to, I think, June 13th because our next meeting is like June 6th. But if there's something that gets in the way, we extend it a little further.
So if the gov- if the governor declares that out the state of emergency, that doesn't?
No, it doesn't, but TR, the, uh, our town manager has been in line with the governor's, um, emergency declarations. So what does that mean? If if the governor said, uh, there are no need for any more distancing, there's no need for any more masks or anything like that, our town manager would be given the authority under this to say, okay, maybe the CDC is saying this is fine, you don't need masks, all of those things. It is just giving the manager authority. It does not mean that there have to be restrictions. It's given the manager authority to impose those restrictions.
Got it. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, uh, seeing none, and, uh, I'm closing the public hearing. Does anyone from the council want to be here? Um, then I will make a motion to adopt 2021-8, renewal of the declaration of emergency as presented.
Second.
By Counsel Castell. Counsel Breyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Vice President Hum?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the motion carries. Uh, next item on our agenda is to set the discussion, um, set the agenda for the Monday, June 7th, 2021, uh, council meeting, um, among. So we have two things, discussion of the flag ordinance at a future meeting. The other one is anti-arrestment discrimination research. The dis- Solicitor's working on that. We'll also need to discuss the, uh, closure of South Lake um, and, uh, the DEI, uh, committee. Those are things that are on there that we will need for next time. Any any additional ones from members of the council? Counsel Breyer?
I'd like to, um, discuss a $15 an hour municipal minimum wage. Um, what I'd like for for that discussion is for us all to come up with all of the questions we want answered and information we want to have available for a subsequent discussion on, um, how how we'll proceed in that direction.
Okay. Discussion of $15. Um, okay, anything else? Counsel Castell?
Would it be too early with regard to responses we may be getting from the commissions with regard to, um, Vice President Hum's proposal about improving the community after COVID-19? I assume they may need some time. Would that be better the following meeting? Or I'm just throwing that out there so we don't lose track of that.
I think we can just put it on the agenda and we can address it a couple of times, you know?
Yes.
I I'm I'd be surprised if we get all of them in by that time. Because some of them, uh, will be meeting in the next couple of days and they might not care. Anything else? Okay. Uh, next item on our agenda is executive session. And I I would ask that, does anyone have a motion to move into an executive session in accordance with Rhode Island 4246582 litigation, Shine Harmony, and 4246585 acquisition of property? And to discuss the minutes of the executive session from April 5, 2021, replacement on the town council agenda for June of 2021?
Moved?
Vice President Hum, is there a second?
Second.
Given by Counsel Castell. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
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 Counsel Castell?
Aye.
We also vote aye. Uh, we will move into executive session. For those attendees, you are welcome to wait for us. Um, but we will be in executive session, um, working on these issues. And, uh, we will return after we've completed that. So we are now in executive session. Thank you.
You're muted, Mike.
We're now back in, uh, session. We moved out of executive session. Uh, let the record reflect that no, no votes were taken.
That's correct, and we also need a separate motion now to seal the minutes of the executive session.
Uh, I make a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Castell. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Those minutes are sealed. And now we can adjourn, right?
Motion to adjourn would be appropriate.
Uh, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn? So. Vice President, Ron, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
Now vote aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Aye.
Bye, everybody. Good night.
Mike Davis. Bye.